All right, we'll go ahead and officially call the meeting to order at 7:00 PM. First up is roll call, and we'll start to my right.
Josh Patterson, Plymouth sophomore and Student Voice in Action co-chair. Good evening.
I'm JD Westra, board member. Thank you for coming out tonight.
Good evening, I'm Anubam Chigsoodoo. Thanks for being here.
Hi, everybody, welcome. Lauren Christensen.
Hi, I'm Cheryl Picar. Glad you all could be here.
I'm Penny McCoyn. Thanks for coming out tonight.
Great, and if we can have members of the administrative team introduce themselves?
Good evening, Liz Vartania Gibbs, Assistant Superintendent, Student and Family Engagement.
Good evening, Shante Langford, Chief Human Resource Officer. Welcome.
Good evening, welcome. I'm Beth Rail, Chief Academic and Innovation Officer. Thanks for being here tonight.
Hi, my name is Debbie Piaz. I'm the Chief Finance and Operations Officer. Welcome.
Good evening, Kurt Tiscuitz, Assistant Superintendent for Student Services. Welcome.
And good evening, everyone. Nick Brandon, Executive Director, Communications and Marketing. Welcome.
Diane.
This is Diane Robertson. She's the executive secretary, or Executive Administrative Assistant for Dr. Monica Hall Merritt, Superintendent of Schools.
She's lost without Dr. Merritt here. She's like, I don't know what to do. All right, Mr. Patterson, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll jump into business. Action item 24-11-26, adoption of agenda, approval of consent agenda. Ms. Langford, will you walk us through the agenda?
Yes, thank you.
I'm sorry, can I get a motion?
Mr. President, I move that we adopt the agenda and approve the consent agenda, action item number 24-11-26.
Is there a second?
Second.
Oh, no, I just wanted to pull one thing off.
Sure.
That is the Health Services, the Policy 5310.
Okay, Health Services. Let me find it real quick. Policy, got it. All right, so we will, so do we need to amend?
Yeah. Are we pulling that out?
Yes, that's what the request was.
Yeah, I didn't know if we discussed if there was questions tonight for that, or if you had some other questions on it.
Generally, we don't have discussion on consent agenda items.
Okay.
But if you want to pull an item.
But we can pull it in, and we'll push it to the next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, so questions would be for till the next meeting then?
Or you can send them to the Policy Chair.
Okay, all right.
If I could just remind all board members to speak directly into your mics. We're already having a hard time picking up audio. Thank you.
All right, so we need to amend this agenda item, correct? And do we need a new agenda item?
No, then we need to approve the amended agenda.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the amended agenda?
Yes, I move that we approve the amended agenda minus the...
Health Services.
Policy 5310.
Correct. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, now will you walk us through the consent agenda?
Wait, now we need to approve, first we amended the agenda, now we've got to approve the amended agenda.
Okay, all in favor of approving the amended agenda, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. All right, motion passes, what are we, six, six zero? All right. So now is there a motion to approve the new amended agenda?
I move that we approve the amended agenda and amended consent agenda, action item 24-11-26. Is that the same agenda item, or do we get a new one? Same.
It's the same, okay. Second, is there a second?
Second.
All right, all in, uh, walk us through.
No discussion, no. Okay, thank you. So tonight's consent agenda consists of items from the Human Resources Department, new hires, leaves and resignations, approval of minutes, and then the first reading for now for policies.
Great, are there any questions or comments? All right, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. All right, carry six zero. And with that, Ms. Langford, can you walk us through new hires?
Absolutely, thank you, President Wilson. So tonight, we have five teacher new hires and three non-affiliated new hires to introduce. So this evening, when I call your name, if you don't mind standing up so that we may recognize you, we start with Tracy Belcher, who will be a homebound teacher with Plymouth Goals. Welcome. Stacy Brooks, counselor at West. Sanaa Patel, who will be an instructional coach at ISVSTER. Sarah Shipley, who will be math and integrated science at Pioneer. And Heidi Worley, who will be Spanish at Salem. Welcome to all of our new teacher hires. All right, and then tonight, we also have the hiring of a computer technician. We have Mr. And then we have one of our current employees, Jessica Collier, who is moving from the Finance Department and who will now be the registrar over under Kirk's area. And finally, last but not least, we have Mrs. Jill Minnick, who will be our Chief Finance and Operations Officer. Jill comes from us with a variety of experience in many school districts. She also was an auditor with the state at one time. She has worked for Ann Arbor Schools, Novi Schools, Oak Park. I know you have some experience in Illinois. I know that you bleed green, so that's important as well. And you have your masters from Wayne State. So we just want to recommend and welcome Jill this evening. And Ms. Minnick, if you wanted to say a few words, you are more than welcome to.
Thank you so much. I do appreciate this opportunity to be considered by the Board of Education for employment this evening. I'm very grateful for the opportunity. I have very large shoes to fill, but I very much appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And if my new hires will all quietly kind of meet me out in the hallway, I have a little something for you, and then you may be dismissed, and that concludes our HR portion.
Thank you. All right, you guys give a round of applause one more time for all of our new hires. Onto celebrating success, and Member Westra is going to lead us this evening.
This evening, we are, the Board of Education, will once again celebrate our school community with an extra mile award to one of our hardworking and outstanding staff members, our Director of Integrated Technology Systems, Mike Salzer. Mark, I'm sorry. Mark, a truly intelligent, thoughtful and kind person, is always the go-to for positive and pleasant conversation. He represents the district with great pride and always finds ways to improve the technology program. His self-motivation and determination is an honor to have at PCCS, and he consistently gives 100% plus effort in his work. Mark is always willing to help, morning, day and night, and as his team might say, even to a fault. Often, as he could pass a task on to others, but when he is asked about it, he replies with his trademark, "Just to do, just to get it done." Mark is constantly looking for new ways to do things or to be efficient with resources, and he has proven to be a responsible decision-maker when it comes to investments. The PCCS community is so fortunate to give great credit to such a hardworking and humble leader for our students, staff and families. At this time, I would like to invite Cliff Stratton, who recognized Mark Salzer for this award, to talk more about Mr. Salzer's contributions to PCCS schools.
Hello, members of the Board. Hello, my name is Cliff. I work in the Technology Department, and I have to apologize, I've been under the weather for the last couple of days, so my voice is going to be a little choppy at best here. Mark and I first met, apologize for the notes, this is some things I wanted to be sure I got right. Mark and I first met some 20 years ago, when we both worked at Ypsilanti Public Schools. You're heading over. My work is there is similar to what I do here, in that I help run the computer networks, the servers and anything else that probably had electricity in it. Mark was a middle school teacher at YPSY, taught science or STEM classes, maybe? Yeah, I think it was, yeah. He was a bit of a pain in the Technology Department backside. He asked a lot from us. Often enough, we heard he needed more storage, new software installed to be installed on his classroom computers, extra memory installed, a faster printer, and so on. All of this had us working a little harder and a little longer, but this was all good work. He wasn't pushing for his own benefit, he was advocating for his kids, to give them a better environment and experience. It was extra work we didn't mind doing. That was Mark 20 years ago, and it's him today. Mark no longer teaches, but he's still a strong advocate, but now he's advocating for the district, the teachers and support staff, and again, for the kids that we all serve. In conversation he has with us, all we hear is, in his words and thoughts he expresses, how does this impact the district? How does this impact the kids? I struggle to find the right words to express something here. I wanted to convey what a wonderful, terrific or competent steward of the district resources Mark is, the money. He really does watch every penny that is spent. He will question our purchase request, is it really needed? Can it be done a different way? Can you get it on eBay? When you are purchasing thousands of anythings, there's going to be some amount of zeros involved. If there is a dollar per unit to be saved, Mark is all over it. He's very tight with the purse strings. In our department, he is plainly referred to as cheap. But in a good way. He's a good steward of the district, he really is. Mark is a tireless worker, truly an extra mile. On many days, I'm the second to last to leave the office, Mark and Andrew usually are the last. Often enough, we will receive an email from Mark at 1:00 in the morning, 2:00 in the morning, 5:00 in the morning, perhaps you have two. I don't know how his wife puts up. When word spread in the department about Mark's selection for this award, somebody wrote something, Jerry and Andrew, that I'd like to quote and end with. They wrote, "I think we all agree that Mark is beyond worthy, Mark is beyond worthy of receiving this award, given his work ethics, endless hours and dedication, not only to our department, but to the district as a whole. Members of the Board and the community..." Could I have you stand, and let's give Mark a round of applause.
Would you like to come up?
Yeah. They really got me. I was kind of hoping it was going to be something, you know, less than this. Good work. Good, good.
Can I give you the award first?
Yeah, of course.
On behalf of the Board of Education, I present Mark Salzer with the Mary Beth Carroller Extra Mile Award for consistently going the extra mile to support the students of Plymouth Canton Community Schools.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. Yep, you really got me. And, and, and I'm flattered, I'm, you know, I'm just, I was thinking I was going to be a little embarrassed, I'm more than that, and Cliff went real long, and I knew that he's not been feeling well, so that's like an extra appreciated item. I'd say, I do work hard, I will self-admit, and I am cheap, I'll admit that too, and my wife struggles sometimes with that, but I, I am really privileged. The folks that are here are wonderful people to work with, they are caring, they're very committed to the district, they're so hardworking and so, yeah, I'm, I work hard, but they inspire me. I think we, we work well together, and I'm, the district should be, you know, clapping, this is for me, but it's really for us, because it is an us thing going on. So, thank you, team, I really appreciate this. Yep, we'll leave it at that.
Good point.
Those from the tech staff attending tonight, you can pick up your gift cards tomorrow.
Onto Board Committee reports and action, no president's report, no superintendent report, so we're going to move on to SPA report with Members Sedu.
Thank you, and I had the opportunity to work with Mark outside of this work for many years, and congratulations to him, really worthwhile, worth it. I'd like to give a quick update about the Student Performance and Achievement Committee that met earlier this month, I believe it was November 1, and we spent a lot of time talking about the expansion of Starkweather Academy. We've had a lot of discussions in the community, a lot of families come forward at previous SPA meetings to talk about, why don't we expand it to include ninth graders as well? So we posed that question to the principal, Kevin, and he gave us a presentation, and we had an opportunity to ask those questions. So basically, there are pros and cons, given the size of the building, and Kevin really walked us through, what's the capacity? How many students can we have? And try to keep the same ratio that we currently have. So we looked at the current ratio and maybe upping the ratio a little bit, and so, of course, this is going to cost money, and so what we did was, we asked Kevin to go back to the drawing board, come back with dollars and cents, that way we can talk about the pros and cons with dollars attached to it. So there's also displacement of current programs that are in there, what do we do about those? So there are a lot of moving parts to this, and so it's going to take a lot of work to come up with some solution, some viable solution. So I am appreciative to the community for asking these tough questions and for advocating for all students, because there is a need for an expansion. We also had a course name change request for Honors Photography, and I think it's a first read on this agenda. We had a lot of discussion on this one, because it's changing the Honors Photography to an AP course, and we talked about, what does that mean for kids? Are there pros and cons to this? And there were a lot more pros, and one of the things that came out of it is, to have the course catalog have both names for the upcoming year, so kids know it's the same course, but it has an AP title, so they're not afraid of it. And we had about a 10-minute overview of the instructional coaching model that happens in the districts, which was well received, and our next meeting is December 11 in this room.
Fantastic, thank you. All right, policy with Member McCoyn.
So we have not met since our last board meeting. Our next meeting is Tuesday, November 28, 2023, at 5:30 PM. We meet in the collaboration space, which is on this floor, all the way to the end of the hallway, and everybody is welcome. We usually have quite a packed agenda, and within the next month or two, we're going to have to put on, looking at the Starkweather, there's policies around that program, so we, if that gets changed, we would have to add those to ours. But everyone is welcome to attend, and it's next two weeks from tonight.
Thank you. F and O, and I believe, wait, who drew the short straw?
All right, now I'll just, yep, okay. So we had a meeting last Thursday, and we talked about the Tanger property sale update and what was going on with that, and they're still, it's still in process. And then there is, we also talked about the non-homestead renewal, and that will be put off till February, when they have the primaries, because the legislature's been closed, so that has been moved to that date, and just the bus radio replacement award, and that was basically what we covered, and that took a lot of time, just going over all the other, the Tanger property. And then our next meeting will be this Thursday, because of the holidays, so, Thanksgiving, so we'll have another one. And that was it.
All right, thank you. SVA, Mr. Patterson?
So our last meeting went amazing. We invited all the students of PCCS in middle school through high school to come to an SVA open house, to see what we're doing, and so they could consider joining and see what, like, how it's going. And their voices and feedback were very insightful and amazing to have. Our next meeting is November 20 in the Canton Media Center, and I hope to see you there.
Thank you, Josh.
Mr. President, can I add just a piece to that? Because it relates to Student Voice in Action Committee liaisons. So our liaisons have been going to the committee meetings, and I had the opportunity to have the liaisons in the policy meeting, as well as SPA, and I got to tell you, they add so much value to the conversation, so I want to thank the kids that stepped up to this role.
Thank you, that's a great update. All right, onto administrative reports. First up, we have a couple of action items, Finance and Operations. First up is action item 24-11-27, consider approval of a resolution to purchase a cargo van for Maintenance Department, and this is the final reading. Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I move that we approve a resolution to purchase cargo van for the Maintenance Department. Action item number 24-11-27, final reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any discussion or further questions? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. All right, carry six zero. Second up is action item 24-11-28, consider approval of resolution for sidewalk replacement at Hoben Elementary. This also is the final reading. Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I move that we consider the approval of resolution for sidewalk replacement at Hoben Elementary School, final reading. This is action item number 24-11-28.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Member Westra. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. All right, carry six zero. Ms. Piaz, that was quick for you. All right.
Thank you very much.
Anything to add? All right, Teaching and Learning with Beth Rail. Consider approval of resolution, so this is going to be the first reading.
First week, yep. So as Secretary Sedu mentioned earlier, we had a discussion at SPA around a course name change request that was brought forth by the administrative team at PCEP. The course is currently named Honors Photography. The curriculum that has been implemented in this course over time has been the AP curriculum. So the course curriculum is not changing, they're requesting a name change of the course to better communicate the fact that this is an AP, Advanced Placement Level course, and also to allow that to be on the student's transcript. The importance of that is twofold. One, students already take the AP exam, in fact, we pulled some data during the meeting, and 100% of the students who take the AP exam have passed the AP exam in this course. The piece, though, is that doesn't indicate an AP course on the student's transcript coming through PCEP. So the team feels strongly about doing that. The thing that's a little bit, I'll kind of unpack this a little bit, so, and answer any questions you have. We currently have a course already called AP 2D Art and Design Portfolio. That course name exists in the PCEP catalog. This course would be named the same thing as that course, there would be two different structures of the course, though. The curriculum is the same, the media would be different. The media meaning, the course that's currently named this at PCEP is a drawing course, this would be a photography course. So in our, it would designate it on the transcript, drawing or photography, but this course is teaching the same content and the same curriculum. So the course name request is a request to change from Honors Photography to AP 2D, Two-Dimensional Art and Design Portfolio, which is the AP-named course, and this would go into effect this coming fall, if approved, and would be designated in the course catalog in January, February, when it launches. We would also designate, because the question was asked about, how will students know that it's the same course with the same content, but just named differently? So we're going to designate that in the course catalog for this year and make that very explicit to students. So I'll entertain any questions you might have.
We'll start to my right.
Well, I already asked all my questions in the SPA, so, in the SPA meeting, so, I just want to say that I think this is a very useful name change and a good name change. It was a little bit confusing to us in SPA that this is the same class, but it's different media, so I'm glad that you're going to designate that as drawing or photography in there. But, yes, I think it's a good change.
Mr. Patterson?
No questions, thank you for your hard work.
No questions, we discussed this in detail at the meeting.
Yeah, I think it, you know, I see the reasoning for it, you know, so that students get the AP credit, or it shows on their transcript. I guess my question was around, if, if we have two AP courses that are named the same, is there an opportunity for a student to accidentally sign up for one versus the other, and how do we resolve that?
Yep, what we would do is, we'll make sure that, one, it's explicit in the course catalog, but also, this course is like the third in a pathway from beginning intermediate photography, so it's really also around staff, talking, counselors, talking to students, everybody understanding it. When we start the first few days of school, too, is making sure that kid was in the right place, so we will do all that due diligence around this thing.
Okay, great. And I have no questions, thank you.
That was, that was really what I was asking, going to ask about, too, how we would make sure the kids got into the right class.
All right, no questions for mine. Thank you very much. Okay, onto citizens comment, just as a reminder for citizens comment, the purpose of citizens comments is for the community to be able to provide feedback to the Board. The Board does not respond to the citizens' comments at that time, but we will take notes of the citizen comment, and then the superintendent will follow up with answers to any questions that may have been asked at that time. Also, as a reminder, you'll have three minutes to provide your, your remarks uninterrupted.
Is there, is it possible to add one that was gone before I got here, I got here right before seven?
So, so our, our policy traditionally is that you have to have it in before the start of the meeting?
I was here before, they were gone.
Oh, okay, so, in that case, sure, if you want to complete it and then provide it to, Mr. Brandon?
Yeah, grab that, thank you.
Yep, all right, so that's a good point. Traditionally, they're actually in the hallway, so you fill them out in the hallway and then drop it.
There was nothing next to it.
Got you, okay. All right, first up is Steve Gentilia.
Good evening, thank you for allowing us to speak. First of all, I'd like to apologize to the Board. Last time I spoke, my actions were not who I am as a person. I always tell my kids, when you make a mistake, when I, the kids I coach, plus my own kids, you've got to own it. So I'm here to own it, to move on and flush it, forget about it, and that's the past. My other comments tonight pertain to the Board and your political affiliations. Mr. Keough, in late, middle October, you hosted the City Commission candidates at your house. I think that's inappropriate as a board member. Mrs. McCoyn, on November 6, you posted support for City Commission candidates. Again, I think that's inappropriate for a board member to publicly be supporting candidates for city commissions and other political offices. Both of these issues are wrong, in my opinion. No matter your political beliefs, you should not be publicly endorsing candidates for any office as a member of the Board of Education. At last night's City Commission meeting, Mrs. McCoyn, you expressed your displeasure with the park bond not passing. I wish you would show as much displeasure with the conditions of our schools and the grounds as you did at the Plymouth City Commission last night. Thank you.
Christopher Voss?
I'm all set. Pass. That's okay.
Amanda McMahon?
Okay, I'm here because, I've spoke before during COVID. My daughter struggled immensely during COVID, she's now in 10th grade, and now I have an eighth grader who is facing the new grading scale. I understand it, I have a master's in curriculum, but now we're also facing with that change, teachers not counting or doing any homework. I understand portions of it, but we're not teaching our kids studying skills anymore. Elementary school, they don't get grades. Middle school, it's, everybody's trying to figure it out. I posted on Facebook, and everybody's facing the same thing. So before you decide how you're going to roll it out, if you're going to make it go into high school, please talk to the families, because it, my kid went from all A's, 95th grade. ninety-fifth percentile, ninety-eighth percentile, Cs, Bs. I'm trying to teach study skills. My tenth grader, working on her still, 'cause she, you know, faced middle school virtually. I like, actually, her AP teacher is grading the notes. I found out she didn't know what, um, how to outline or what it meant. So we're going through, we're teaching these things. But I'm really afraid that we're not seeing the big picture. When my kids go to college, will they be able to be independent learners? Will they be able to think? Will they be able to study? 'Cause the study skills are just going downhill. Um, the other portion of the middle school grading, those top kids who really care, they're getting squeezed. Every point is mattering, and parents are having to deal with new types of stress. So while we're helping fewer kids fail, because that, that one point for the sixty points, I get it. You know, when, when you calculate out, you could drop a grade, whatever. I get where that is. But those high-performing kids, they are not learning how to study, and they're also either that, you know... So one parent said, basically, their kid is so stressed that it's stressing the entire family, because those little points matter now. They're on that five-point scale, they can't cushion that grade. My son's teacher at West emailed and basically inferred that, uh, homework points are cushioning the grade. These middle school students sometimes need that. They don't know how to deal with that stress. Um, and I just really hope that if you're looking at rolling it out, you really talk to the parents, because we're all in the same boat. Nobody said their kid's doing great with this middle school grading. Um, and I have a lot of people that, you know, teachers as well, former teachers, whose kids are all struggling with this new grading. It's a big squeeze at that top end, because they all of a sudden, they're comparing a ninety-seven percent to a ninety-six, which is, you know, that four-point-eight to four-point-six-two. So please consider that.
Thank you. Jennifer Voss?
I am Jennifer Voss, a mother of nine children who have attended PCCS for twenty-two years. Four PHS graduates and five students who are still enrolled. My husband attended PCCS. His parents graduated from Plymouth High School in the fifties. My mother-in-law taught at Tanger Elementary the year it opened. My interest in our school district runs deep. Five years ago, I was thrilled to get hired at PCCS, so thrilled, in fact, that I currently still have the voicemail saved on my phone of the person who hired me. I was told they could see my passion for the district in the interview. I tried to keep that passion. I did everything that was asked of me and more. I worked tirelessly to get the 2020 bond passed. I was asked to serve on special committees, including the one-ninety-year celebration, the re-entry committee after COVID, and the spirit team. I started out excited and then realized we would spend a lot of time talking and nothing would change with our current leadership. I sat in a meeting once and listened to leadership discuss one word and its placement in a policy for over thirty minutes. What a waste. You can build new facilities, new pools, new rooms, new fields, but if you don't maintain them, what's the point? We've all been to other districts and seen how they care for their facilities. Fortson High School in Dearborn is over a hundred years old. It's gorgeous and well-cared-for, a source of pride. We sell or tear down our buildings. Well, voters, you need to say no when they ask for more. When I drop my kid off in front of Salem, there's the same box of trash out there for weeks. And this is the same at every building. No one cares enough to take care of them. And why not? Because from the top down, there's an attitude of, it's not my job, and everything is left to fall apart. Can you tell that after working for the district for five years, my passion has changed? I've seen horrible employees, and everyone knows that they are horrible. Get promoted. Directors that no one is really sure where their job is or what they do during the day. These directors don't listen to or care about those who report to them. I've seen good employees, including myself, have to take responsibility for things that were missed or dropped by management. I've seen employees get hired because they are friends, husbands, or children of people in leadership. This continues to happen. Proper hiring practices put in place to avoid this are not being followed. When is someone going to stand up and say, enough is enough? Unfortunately, no one has the bravery to stop the downward spiral that PCCS is in. How long until we go from thirty-eighth in the state to fiftieth to a hundredth? How low is low enough? The kids are why we are here. The employees in this district affect our children and how they are educated. It is time someone took a look at what's going on and hold leadership accountable. I have seen so many, including myself, worried about hanging on to jobs. With this toxic environment, they can't be focusing a hundred percent on kids. I can no longer make a difference on the inside. Someone who cared so deeply was forced to resign. I only have three minutes, so I cannot share the details on how I was treated, but it was not with respect or consideration. I was bullied and intimidated by my superior. From now on, I am going to focus my passion on two things. Making a difference by working for change from the outside and doing everything I can to find a school where my remaining kids at home can go to finish their education, not PCCS.
All right, follow-up, uh, board questions? Let's see, what are the follow-up board questions? We did not have any? No, okay.
I have something that's not, it wasn't from the board thing, but it was a question I wanted. And since I figured we were all here, it was a good...
Yeah, so I want to do two things. So, yep, I'll let you go on that, and then I'll also want to address the, uh, health services piece, but go ahead.
Oh, okay. Do you want to do that first?
Sure. So, so just for transparency, normally what goes into a consent agenda are items that are considered routine, right? Things that, so for instance, from a policy standpoint, if there's minor changes to a policy, we'll put that in a consent agenda because it's, it's, it's minor. And it's not something that should be pulled out and that, uh, we would necessarily need to discuss. What usually happens is that the board gets all of these policies in advance. Uh, they get an opportunity to ask any questions in advance, uh, before we put them in a consent agenda. Um, at any point, any board member can request, uh, consent agenda item to come out, even if it's during the board meeting, like what you saw tonight. But the preference, because once again, I always say, this is the business of the district, this meeting is. So we try to run things really smoothly. And whenever there's, uh, a, a question about a, uh, consent agenda item, the preference would be to request that item to get pulled out in advance, and then we either can, A, answer the question via email, or B, put it on a standalone, uh, agenda item to have a full, uh, discussion transparently. So I do want to give, uh, Member Picard, an opportunity to, uh, state why she pulled it out, because, once again, I always want to be transparent. I don't want to receive an email saying, hey, a board member asked that, uh, uh, item be pulled out. What's wrong with that item? Can you tell me what's wrong with that item? Um, so first, before we do that, what I would, and I know, you know, this is on the fly, uh, member McCoy, but if everyone can pull up the, uh, the, uh, policy in question...
It's attached to the agenda.
It's attached to the agenda. Uh, Health Services Policy fifty-three-ten. And also as another reminder, you know, what happens is that each of our policies go on a rotation. So each policy is basically reviewed every X amount of years. Don't, don't make me, uh, how many years? Every four years. So every policy should be reviewed every four years to make sure that it's current, unless something materially changes.
Is that really true?
That's not true. See, now I just...
So... So our, our goal that we set last year was that we were going to review all of our policies within the next four years, because we have policies that have not been looked at, and we did discover in one of our meetings that one of the issues is that for it to be at the top where it says revised, we've had to have changed something. We could, it could have been discussed and no change is necessary, but it wasn't showing up that way in the policy book. So we're go, we've been talking about ways of having some kind of a spreadsheet that shows we did take a look at it, but there's no revision necessary, so that we don't have that issue again. But we do have policies in the book that have not been, um, looked at for a long time, because some of the things are, are purely like the legal name of the district. Like, we're not changing that.
Right.
So...
But you'll basically mark that it's been reviewed.
And then the idea is to then do review them on a regular basis.
Correct. So, so the correct answer was, uh, our goal is to review every policy every four years. Um, and once again, to Member McCoy's point, it may be that we review it and there's no action needed, uh, so we'll start to note that. And then if there are actions needed, depending on the severity of the changes, would determine if we bring it, uh, as a standalone agenda item or if it goes into a consent agenda. So just for clarity, Member McCoy, can you, uh, talk about what the changes were specifically for fifty-three-ten that were recommended to the board for, uh, Health Services?
So if you look in the packet, there is red highlight, and underneath the red highlight is a line through. And this is in the public packet also, if you get this online. So for instance, it says scoliosis that was taken out. And then, um, the green was added. So for instance, the original policies, most of them, all discussed parents. And this also includes legal guardians, because some children are living with grandparents, aunts, uncles. Um, it's whoever's the legal guardian of the child, add that in. Um, and then down at the bottom, the green, it says or vision. And then again, they took out the scoliosis. Um, that's really all they put in there. And we did have a, quite a lively discussion, because we do nothing but parse the words during...
Got you. So, so what was presented to the board in the consent agenda was basically the recommendation by the policy committee to make four changes, which you see highlighted on your screen. Um, four changes to the existing policy.
Yes.
Um, so I just wanted to set that level set, so that everyone understood, one, how a consent agenda traditionally is formulated, and then, two, what this policy specifically, what this board was asked to vote on based on, uh, the policy changes here, which were these four items. And you can see how these four items are pretty basic, so they wouldn't require a whole lot of conversation at the board level, just more of a review to make sure that, that we agree with, uh, these changes and then vote on it as part of the consent agenda. So with that being said, foundation said, I want to give Member Picard an opportunity to state why she requested, uh, it to be pulled out.
Well, as a policy, it, it, I find it kind of confusing, like, in a, in a sense of, I just wanted clarification as what the policy does say. Um, it talks about, it may require students to submit to periodic health examinations, which doesn't clarify as to, like, where or when. Like, does that mean, like, your annual physical? Like, you know what I mean? Like, and then, and then, because then later on, it says, any health service, um, sorry. Any health services, um, "The board shall directly notify the parents or guardians of students, at least annually at the beginning of the school year, of the specific or approximate date during the school year when any non-emergency invasive physical examination or screening is scheduled or expected to be scheduled for students." Um, if the examination or, you know, read on. But I, like, I don't ever remember there being any invasive physical examinations when my kids were at school. I don't know what that means, like...
Um, so we had quite a discussion on that, and apparently at some times, and in some districts, um, athletic, um, 'cause kids have to have athletic...
Right.
...physicals. And sometimes, um, they, those are held, like, they do a clinic.
Ms. McCoy, can you please speak in your mic?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. So apparently, in some instances, there are clinics held. Um, parents would, of course, have been notified and signed consent for that.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know, 'cause it just said that, that, that would let it know at least at the beginning of the year.
It's, um, mostly legalese.
Oh, for, um...
Like, we, we don't really, we don't do this. Like, we don't have those kinds of things happening. You, um, you would have to go to your doctor.
Right. But, but according to the policy, it kind of assumed, I, I mean, if you were to read this, it, it sounds like...
Right.
...we would do that, so...
Well...
And it kind of, like, it would protect us if we did it.
You could.
But, you know...
So I just wanted to, to jump in on that. So we actually took, we had quite a conversation about this, and we actually took it back to NEOLA. We took it back to legal. And the reason they wanted that in there is I, I, um, there was a time when we did have, like, onsite physicals for athletics. And so the event of, or in the event that this ever happened again, or we decided we wanted to do it, he, they suggested, both legal and NEOLA, that we leave that language in there to protect us in the event of. But it doesn't say that we're going to do it. It just says, if we do, we'll, we'll notify the parent.
But I did, it, it doesn't really say it would notify the parent, though. It just says it would notify it at the beginning of the year, but it doesn't say it would be again, like, if somebody came in and was gonna do an exam.
Right. Well, we would, yeah, we would have to. But, and again, as trustee McCoy stated, this isn't something that we are doing anymore, but in the event that we decide we wanted to, we didn't want to have to go back and redo the policy again.
But, but the bottom line of this policy is that if we were to do something like that, we would notify the parent.
Yes. So why isn't that in there?
So I, because that's covered by other laws. Um, so I work in a district that actually, some of the schools actually have clinics, and children can be seen. And there has to be, um, signed permission from parents in, on file.
So, so I'll read it. It says, "The board shall directly notify the parents/legal guardians of students, at least annually at the beginning of the school year, of specific or approximate dates during the school year when any non-emergency invasive physical examinations or screening is scheduled." So we would be out of policy if we did not set those dates in advance and communicate that to the parents. We would be out of policy if mid-year we decided to do something and we did not notify the parents. So to me, it, it, it speaks to both, um, the fact that we have to notify the parent, and it says when we need to notify the parent, uh, in this policy.
Well, I, I guess that's what I, 'cause it said at the beginning of the year. So I, like, if they didn't catch that or something, then I would, would be concerned that they...
Once again, we'd be out of policy.
Okay. All right.
Correct.
Well, the other thing, too, is how come mental health isn't on here? 'Cause that's a health service. 'Cause I, I'm, I'm concerned about that also being parents notified if a psychologist or, um, some kind of therapist were to meet with your student, with a student, their student. I would, I would, personally, I would want to be notified first, because I would want to choose who was going to be talking to my child. So I don't know why mental health isn't on here.
Do we provide one-on-one, uh, therapeutic services?
We have psychologists employed.
That provide one-on-one?
I don't know.
I'm, I'm asking. I don't know. I'm, I'm literally asking.
Generally speaking, um, school psychologists are pretty tied up just doing the testing for IEPs.
Okay, well, I just kind of...
But this, this is specific to physical health, this policy? Um, 'cause it talks about communicable diseases, um, physical education courses, um, remediable physical disability. So it's, it's specific to physical health.
Okay. Well, I just kind of feel like it needs to say parent, I mean, um...
So what's your, what's your recommendation?
I guess it's just, you know, I don't, I guess because it says health services, I would, do we have anything that says anything for the mental health that, before parents...
Do we have any policies that address mental health?
That parents are informed?
Yeah. So maybe that can be a follow-up, uh, question for the board, is do we have any, I mean, for Dr. Merritt, do we have any policies that, uh, address mental health? And I want to make sure we're asking a specific question, so she can give us a specific answer. So the specific question is, do we have any, um, any policy that covers mental health testing, uh, for our students?
Or any kind of...
Or mental health examinations?
Yeah, any kind of men, like...
Yeah, 'cause all of these are geared towards...
Interaction, kind of like, like, for, um, service.
Yep. So all of these are specific to examinations or screenings. So I want to make sure we're being consistent, right?
Right. So the, I guess, mental health exam...
Examinations or screenings.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, if there's any parent, you're aware of that.
Yep. So as with everything, what happened is, this is a question that was brought up by the board. Uh, Dr. Merritt will, um, research it and then basically send out an update to the, to the full board on the, uh, answer. And then ultimately, uh, if this is, you know, we can pick back up this conversation at the next board meeting, depending on what that, what that answer is. Yeah.
Okay. That's good.
All right. Uh, you had another question?
I just had another question. So like, on our web, on our page, our, um, board page, it has the things that, you know, this, uh, PCC Board of Education statement on condemning racism and working towards social justice. Um, at one point, I saw this when it was first posted. And it has pretty much signed... At one point I saw this when it was first posted and it has pretty much signed, it only has three present school board members that have signed it. The rest are former board members. And then I noticed at one point that there was another message on there, which I printed out because back in the day. And it was a shorter message, which had then the new recent board members. But then that was taken off and then the other one was put back on. So I didn't know what, why that one was taken off or why that one was put on. But it, it seems like it would need to be updated if, if it was going to be on there that there should be those members that agree with it would be signed it, would sign it or.
Do you mind reading in for the record what the statement is?
The PCCS Board of Education Statement on Condemning Racism and Working Towards Social Justice?
Yes.
Yes, that one.
Yep. Do you mind reading it? Just so that, so everyone can understand what we're talking about.
The PCCS Board of Education releases this statement in solidarity, solidarity after recent uprisings and protests happening across the nation in the wake of the death of George Floyd. This statement was read during the PCCS regular meeting of the Board of Education Tuesday, June 9th, 2020. This is a challenging time for our community and our country. Our nation is dealing with multiple crises with the COVID-19 pandemic along with the systemic and structural racism that is still prevalent in our society. Both of these are disproportionately affecting African Americans. All of this has caused much uncertainty and stress in the lives of our students, families, and staff. The most recent events that have played out in the media with George Floyd, Ahmaud Arbery, Christian Cooper, Breonna Taylor, and others are not isolated cases of injustices that African Americans experience on a daily basis. These just happen to be recorded and shared widely through social media. African Americans have been dealing with oppression and racism for centuries. As tragic events unfold, there is hope as we see people throughout our community, country, and across the globe standing in unity for justice and peace. As educators, parents, let's see, I don't have the whole, something. When we talk about equity and opportunity gaps within our subgroups, we cannot look at these challenges in isolation. They are connected to a bigger systemic problem of intolerance, oppression, discrimination, and bias. We know that there is much work to be done at every level of society. As community members, we must acknowledge the racism, discrimination, and bias that plays out in various forms in our society. Its damage ripples through our community and country, generation after generation. The problems will not go away with us standing on the sidelines or looking the other way. I will require, require collective action, oh, it will require collective action, self-reflection, uncomfortable conversations, empathy, and time to solve these tough problems. We are committed to working together to do better and to be better as we seek to build a more equitable and inclusive society. We stand and support all students and educators as we work towards systemic change to eradicate racism. Our children are watching our actions, whether we remain silent or take action towards social justice. Let's help them navigate the challenges by showing courageous leadership and demonstrate how we can work together toward a more just nation where we acknowledge the gifts and talents of all individuals. We are taking this step toward by acknowledging the problems, speaking up, listening, and taking time to learn. Together, we can create a more fair and just world for our children and grandchildren and generations to come. We have the capacity, power, courage, and love to make the necessary changes. If you are looking for more information on how you can be a part of this change, we, here are a few resources to help get started. And listed is tolerance.org, socialjusticebooks.org, and racialequitytools.org.
So your, so the question, so this was done by, this was signed by the existing board on June 9th, 2020, basically a moment in time. Your, your question is?
Yeah, I just was wondering.
Should it be replaced by?
Well, I'm just saying if, if it's up there, it should probably be, if there were members that agreed with that, they should sign it, not, I mean, to have the former members up there.
So where, where is this located?
It's located on the Board of Education page at the request of the board at the time.
Okay. And so is this in archive?
It's a link. I can show you the exact link, but.
I mean, is it, yeah, go ahead.
And if you're going to put this down, so what about a recent walkout that happened? You know, there's some injustice with that too. Well, it's just, I mean, we're continuing, you know, there's, there's other subgroups or segregated subgroups that are also having issues.
Are you saying you'd like to, the board to make a statement that we can then post on the website?
But I would also, no, I, I guess I would like to make sure that this is not representing, I don't agree with all of this. So, and I don't agree with the resources that are presented. So I would like to make sure that this is not appearing as if this is something we all agree with.
Well, the good thing is it has the signatures of who the board members were. But can you go back so I can see where?
Yeah. So this is the General Board of Education page. And occasionally at the request of the board, we'll post resolutions and things like that. And this was one of those examples. So it's been living on this page since June 9th of 2020.
And, and what I was wondering too is because when I had looked further on, when, when the new board after them was put on, there was a shorter version of, you know, a different statement that was added. And then, I don't know, months later or something, I had re-looked at the page and then this was gone and then this one was put back up. So I didn't know like what was, what was all that about.
So I think, I think.
Mr. President, could I add a little context?
Sure.
So I, I was the president of the school board at that time and I thought it was important for us to archive information as the board puts out statements, as events happen. So that was at my request that we put out those statements. As you can see, there were resolutions that we passed as a board and those are all archived based on the date. If anything happens with the current board, we will put that here as well.
Okay.
Yes, yes. So that was something that I asked for, but if you want to change that, you're more than welcome to.
Well, no, so that's why I read the date and then I basically pointed that this was a moment in time and this was a response by that board at that time. Yep. And that's why I asked if it was part of an archive, which it, which it is. So I think we, we want to be careful and I'm happy to have the conversation of how long do archive items, you know, stay up? How do we determine when archive items come down? But what I wouldn't be supportive of is handpicking when certain items come down based on individual.
Oh, it's not individual.
No, no, no. I'm, I'm, right? I'm, I'm just saying because ultimately we could have another board member who points to something else, right? I, I think it's important that we're consistent with how we archive, archive things. And I think that that was an important moment in time. It reflected what that board at the time felt and, and, you know, so I respect that. If this board, this body decides to put out a, a statement, it, it will then live in that archive as well. On something else that's happening today, whatever that may be.
Sent, put there as an archive. Because to me, it kind of appeared like statement of, like if I was just coming in as somebody and I was looking at the page, I would have looked at that and said, oh, that's a statement of the board. And, you know, I would have said, oh, that's an archive. I mean, it has a date, but it, because it's still there, it would appear to me that that's still holds to everybody on the board. But didn't have the right board numbers or names on there.
Yep.
So, and, and so also with. And then also with the MASAB one, those signatures, you can't, you don't really, can't read them. There's no names on it. It's the, oh, are you on that page? It's on the, it's up at the top, like when you put it, yeah, it's like, it's like, kind of like. And that's probably from, yeah, way back.
Maybe 21, yeah. I would encourage people to read the date.
Yeah, I know, but it's kind of one of, you know, it's kind of the appearance of it. It's just kind of clarifying what it all says. So I just wanted to, just kind of make that awareness, I guess.
Thank you. Are there any other questions? All right. Well, if there's no other questions, then we are officially adjourned at 7:58 PM.